The zoning board of appeals hearing, today's date Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand and twenty four. To my left, I have a board member, Mr. Himmel, Mr. Franco, Ms. Barry, Mr. O'Brien, our clerk. Kathy.
Kathleen.
Kathleen Griffin, sorry, put on a blank. And our director of inspectional services, Mr. Conlan. I'd ask everybody with a cell phone to please turn it on mute for the. Please turn your ringer on mute for the remainder. And if I can have a, a motion to accept and waive the reading of the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting from September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, first order of business, old business Z B eight twenty four dash four, Daniel Regeniti for a variance to erect a small patio to accommodate a ten by sixteen foot shed on premises numbered nineteen Agawam Road Quincy. And make a motion to move that to October twenty second, two thousand and twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Old business Z B eight twenty four dash twenty four, Cody Chi for a variance in a finding to construct and attach a third unit to an existing two family home on the premise numbered fifty nine Old Colony Ave Quincy. And make a motion to move that to ten twenty two, twenty four.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. So if you're here to, for either of those cases, they'll be heard on, at our next meeting on October twenty second. Due to, I should have mentioned, our chair is, is out ill tonight, so uh, that's why he would like we were moving those accounts, uh, cases. Accounts, sorry, I think I'm in my day job. Case Z B eight twenty three sixty six, one oh eight Albatross Road, they requested a six month extension. Could I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else on that one, Mr.?
No, sir.
Okay, perfect. So new be, new business.
Swear.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Uh, we need to, if you're gonna, um.
You're gonna testify.
They're gonna testify.
Tonight, we stand, raise your right hand, lawyers, you don't have to.
Anybody who's gonna speak tonight?
Anybody can speak.
Please raise your right hand.
Do you swear that the testimony that you will give in the matter at hand will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business, Z B eight twenty four dash fifty eight, Joan McGlaughlin and John Lehman for a variance and special permit. F P O D to increase the single, current single family home by one and a half stories and renovate the front back porches at a rear addition. And make the structure flood compliant, compliant on the premise numbered one forty four, one forty five Dorchester Street. Quincy is the applicant here.
Yes.
Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Brian Donahue, uh, from Donahue Architects here in Quincy. Uh, this evening, I'm representing, uh, John Lehman and Joan McGlaughlin, the owners of one forty five Dorchester Street. The, the site is located at the end of Dorchester Street on the way towards Moon Island with, uh, a proximity to Nickerson Beach. So Dorchester Ave borders, uh, the, uh, the roadway, uh, to the beach. So what, what the applicant would like to do would be to raise the home down to the foundation. And rebuild and expand it slightly to accommodate a new and modern home. The plans that you have in front of you depict what we are hoping to do. Um, they've already been through the conservation commission process with an approval. So this is obviously the next step because we are seeking relief on setbacks. The building on the sides, the lot itself is. Fifty five hundred square feet plus or minus. The drawing on the left shows the existing footprint, drawing on the right shows our proposed new footprint. So it's a fifty five hundred square foot lot, um, single family, Cape, very small, about fifteen hundred square feet at the most of existing living space. Plus an attached garage, the house is six and a half feet on the right of property line and ten and a half feet on the left. It does respect the, the front property line of twenty five feet in the front and the twenty feet in the back of residence A, which this is obviously in. Obviously, the house is, is, is small in size and they would, they would hope to, um, there's still a possibility that John, uh, and Joan would be living in this house, that's hasn't been decided yet. But they definitely want to go through the renovation, John is a builder himself, he's done a lot of work in the neighborhood and, uh, and around the, uh, Boston area, so he's a competent builder, I've worked with him before. And he's, uh, uh, he and his wife Joan are proposing this renovation. So what we, the initial thrust would be to bring the building down to the, to the sale of the existing foundation because we have to raise it up a foot for the living space. We can fill in the foundation, um, of the main box, which is here. Bring it right up to the existing grade, put in the flow through panels because this is, isn't an A E zone, um, and then build up from that. So that's the plan in terms of the, the actual size. So we, we are sticking, uh, front yard relief and eight inches of rear relief, or five feet into the twenty five foot setback. This is a rendering of the front of the house, um, the locust plans basically show the location. And one thing I, I should say, um, as a former squonomite myself, is that along this road, there's a very inconsistent, um, setback of the existing homes that are there. Some are on the property line, some are back ten feet, some are back twenty feet. So we think by impinging on that just five feet with the expansion towards the front, um, that we're not doing anything out of the ordinary for the character of the roadway. This architectural site plan shows how the new house will sit on the lot, a single car garage with paving, uh, permeable pavers on the front, so there's plenty of room for at least three more vehicles. Uh, we're creating a new vestibule in the front and a new porch. Because the living areas in the master bedroom face the ocean and we wanted to maximize those views. The small addition on the back is, is a mudroom and an entryway, um, with a half path, open plan kitchen, living, dining, up to a second panel. Four plans are three, three floor, this house is approximately thirty three hundred square feet of living space, which is more than norm, you know, fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred if you get condos for that size these days. So this, this particular house, again, as, as I mentioned, a single car garage, um, open kitchen, living, dining. Second floor is three bedrooms and an office, screened porch, two baths, and then a, a finished attic with a, with a full bath up in the attic, it's been up as well for potentially a game room or, or a bunk room. These elevations, I think, are too eventually, so we refer to the renderings to show where, um, what the design, um, is looking like. It's a fairly straightforward gable roof, um, kind of a, a beachy vibe to it, we're gonna be using baton siding and, and shingles. It's two and a half stories to meet the zoning, um, the, the top floor is dormered, so we can get a little bit of light in that space up top. Again, um, the main box is here. And we're bumping a little bit, five feet out on the front and adding these two porches for, um, for outdoor living space facing the ocean. Also, there's a small deck in the back, um, facing the backyard. You know, it's, again, it's very traditional materials, double hung windows, um, under the, under the requirement for building height for this zone as well. Even with the elevated first floor, we're under thirty five feet, so, um, that's kind of it in a nutshell, I think, uh, Mr. Lehman, would you like to say a few words, if that's okay, the, uh, the applicant?
Mr. Lehman, did you get sworn in?
I did.
Yeah, okay.
I raised my hand.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, thank you for having us, uh, just wanted to say that Joan grew up in this neighborhood. I've done a lot of work here, I only want to do what's right for the neighborhood, I know, um, most of the people there. And because of the shape of this lot and the fact that we wanted to use the exist, much of the, of the existing building as we could. There's no other way to get, get us the square footage that we need to live there. So, um, I think it's pretty straightforward, the plan, I think Brian did a good job. I know we have some of the neighbors here that want to speak, so, thank you.
Certainly have the opportunity. Any questions for, at this time? Mr. Himmel, you got any questions?
No questions.
Joan, Barry?
Not yet.
All right, well, first, uh, call those in favor. If you are in favor of the project or want to speak, please step forward. Just name and address for the record, please.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having me, uh, Gary Kirk, twenty seven Shoreham Street, a little bit six houses up from where the proposed building is, uh. Can't speak highly about Joan and John, I've known him in a personal capacity and a professional capacity, having built our home. Professionals in every sense of the word. Many homes in the street that he's built, and as he had stated, he's here to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Hope you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor?
Brian Semerall, fifteen Shoreham Street, uh, also know John and Joan, uh, for a long time, uh, they built my house, live about three houses up from proposed property. Boys done the right thing for the neighborhood, certainly support what they want to do.
Thanks.
Hi, Kelly Gilson, twenty eight Shoreham Street, um, the projected home I view right down to. And, um, John and Joan, they have built many houses on my street, including my own, they do an exceptional job, they're always in taking consideration, neighbors, what they're doing. I have absolutely no objection, my mother is here today, she's a direct abutter, it's a great home for the neighborhood and the way they're doing it. And so I'm very much in favor of this, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Sorry.
Good evening, my name is Tish Fernandez, and I am in a butter right behind the property, and again.
Just your address, Tish, please.
Ten Shoreham.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And again, I can, I have absolutely no problem, I've seen the work that they do, um, as has been said, they're very conscientious. They're very, don't, they're part of the neighborhood, and I believe that one of them still owns some property right there. They always do great work as well as being very, very respectful to the flavor of the neighborhood and the neighbors themselves.
Thank you very much.
Are you the house, or spend a lifetime Shoreham?
Not, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so your backyards are checked?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
How you doing, Paul Joyce, fourteen Shoreham? So I'm the second house.
Okay.
Uh, technically the third, because the corner house is Dorchester.
Yes.
But I'm, I'm fourteen, and I already can't see over the, the current house, so, and, um. My view, I can see the water from my back deck, and I know, I've seen the plans, it's not, they're not expanding from side to side, so I have no objection at all. Uh, John did an addition on our house fifteen years ago, and couldn't be more happy with it, so I have no exceptions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in favor? First call, second call, call that part of the hearing closed. Any plans, or? No, from, uh, the engineering department, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four. We reviewed this middle for the above referenced project and have the following comments, upon completion of the project as built plan showing all utilities, building footprints, reference, bounds to be submitted along with the digital file. As pre-built plan shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer, an elevation shirt should, cert, should also be submitted if the property is in the flood zone. Opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call, do you want to speak, Mr. Coleman?
Hi, uh, my name's Chris Coleman, I, uh, one forty one Dorchester Street, right next to, uh, the home John and Joan want to build and are gonna build. I couldn't agree with it better with everything everybody just said. The problem is, we're only looking for conformity, when you look up the street, all the, uh, porches or front steps are all in a line. It's about conformity, this is a zoning board meeting, right? John builds excellent stuff, everything everybody said tonight is true. We just want conformity, keeping the, the line going, I built the house at one thirty one Dorchester Street, an excellent house built by John. We just want to make sure the houses stay in a line, in a row, you know, and I thought that's what zoning was for, yeah? To just keep, if you go up Shoreham Street, everything's in a line, if you go along Dorchester Street, everything's in a line. That's, we just don't want the middle house sticking out like that, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Anyone else opposed or undecided?
Hi, my name is Win Pham, and I'm at one thirty one Dorchester Street, I actually live in a house that John built, beautiful. Uh, I'm here just to voice my thought that, um, we rather want to be in the neighborhood, we'd rather want to see, preserving the consistency, the conformity of the existing condition. Right now, every house, if you take a laser beam, you fly it down from left to right to the end of the block, you will see everything on that same line. As Chris pointed out, this is the situation that we're gonna run into.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Mark Dujin. Uh, I live on one fifty one Dorchester Street, next to, uh, to the house John got to build. So, uh, like Chris and, uh, Win, they already say exactly the way I wanna say it. So, and reason is, you know, my house did, um. Built by John, but just outside, one fifty one, the inside, we have somebody else to finish, not by John. So anyway, John is a professional, he is a nice guy, he, he a builder. But the way he gotta, I look at the plan, the way he gotta build that, I don't, I'm not agree. So, because from his house to my house, you know, net each other. Soon as, if I, if he, he, he put a house all the way up and go forward to the, uh, street five, six feet. The time the stair done, probably the light, eight or nine feet left from the sidewalk. So anyway, when I, on my house, second floor, or fourth floor, I could not, I lose my view. And if I step out in the front of, on the house, if I step right in front of the house, I only see left his house, nothing else. Cannot see Win the bag, because it's so big, so high, you know, and, uh, it's too close to my house either. That's why I not agree.
Do you know what your front?
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you know what your front setback is? You built that house after him.
From the step?
From your front steps.
The front step, did, uh, Anne, I bought the house from Anne.
No, 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 I know, but you rebuilt the whole house, what's your, what's your front setback, do you know? To the steps from your, from this?
I, I'm not even, uh, no, I'm not even, no, because.
I mean, I'm pulling, I'm pulling up your plans now.
The pow, the powderation, I mean, the, uh, the landing, the landing for the stair. The, uh, I, they have the big hills, you know, like the concrete slab. I actually ran the machine, I, I jack that myself, I jack it up myself, that John view that time, I jack it up, I dig everything up. And I actually moved the stair on the side, that's way less to go to the street. I put the stair on side, both side, uh, I mean, one side, it not toward to the front. And I actually don't know, you know, how big the concrete is and how much less whatever there, but I actually go back. And I just go up there and ask the, um, the, uh, the, uh, the, the city. For me to go make the house square, it not start, the city say no, and that's where, you know, I live the way it is. And that, that's where, you know, I don't know how many feet left or whatever there, so, but I build right on the foundation, assistant of powderation. It not go forward at all, not go to forward, only the landing.
We measure, we measure from the landing, like, that's, that's, that's how we measure in the city, like, if you were, you have a front porch in the, the, the front in your house, and by city definition, that's part of your building. When you, when any type of, as soon as you go up, that's where you have to have conformity, you're, and, and yours is, sticks out further than, than that house would in the end.
Well, stick out, that, when I do that, actually, I'll do that in city, and then, um, and then Bruce.
Am I wrong, when you have any type of awning in your?
Bruce.
That, that's considered part of your building, so that's, that's part of your front entrance, so if you're, if you've come out past, yeah, it's, yeah, it's covered.
Bruce, when I, when I go, when I, when I break the concrete and I, I foot the, uh, the, uh, the lock hole.
Yeah, yeah.
For, 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 for decoration.
Around the corner from me, I, I've seen the house.
Excuse me, for decoration, and I put that up, and actually Bruce, he come over, he asked me, okay, you have a plan? I say, no, I don't have a plan, he say, you know what look like when you done?
Yeah.
I say, I can draw you little bit, get idea, and then he told me to chart it, and I go, I draw that, I bring to the.
To the building department.
The building department, go to engineering.
Yeah.
Room, I believe with Chris, he, we can go together, and engineering room say, that's not structural. And I can live, I can live like that, because no structure, on, only the, the front porch, not upstairs.
I'm not having.
Not upstairs.
No, I'm just saying, that's not, when, when, any type you would procure from your property, anytime you have any landing, any steps, those are part of your, what we would call your existing building, so it, it's, it's neither here nor there, yours is already built.
I.
Yeah.
I actually not gotta go any forward, I did do whatever, I bought the house from, and the power, I mean, the landing right there, only thing different, only thing different than the landing, I put two pole, two, three pole and put a rail. To make a look, that's only thing I do different.
Yeah.
That's only thing I do different, just put a pole, one pole, two pole, three pole, and I get a lock from the water.
I get.
I ring the water, I put it up, everything out, and then everybody kind of say something, and then Bruce coming down, and he asked me to go up there. And I did the next day, and then I bring the plan, go to the engineering room, engineering room say, okay, because no structure, because nothing to port the top. I can take two pole out anytime, is it gone? It's gone.
Yeah, no, I understand, I, you know, I mean, the plans, I, I.
If, if they don't let me, if I, if that time, if I go up there, they say no, I still take it down.
Yeah, no, that, that's, yeah.
I still take it down, because, because I.
Yeah, we're not talking about your.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, because I, I live here, I live here, I follow the rule.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering if you knew what your setback was, I just, that's all I was asking.
No, and, I mean, you know, on that time, if, if everybody say, no, you cannot do that, I really have me to take it out, no problem at all.
I mean, technically, you know, it, it was a different time, a different leadership, you know, but that, technically, you need a variance when you're, when you're extending past that twenty five feet, so, um, but that's, it's neither here nor there. Anything else you want to say on, on, on their property, not on yours?
Say again, please.
Anything else about, about the, the proposed property? Anything else you want to add?
For he to build?
Correct, yeah.
He professional, he do whatever he want.
Yeah.
But.
It's about you, yeah.
We, yeah, we just don't want anything look different.
Yeah.
Than everyone else, that's all.
Yeah.
He have more land, he can go on the back, he can go on the side, he can do whatever he want.
Closer to you?
No.
There's not much from there.
I, I, I'm not, yeah, because I bought the house from Anne, that's the way it is.
Yeah.
And I, I build everything up, the powderation, we did the same.
It's, it's, we're not worried about your house. It's, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else opposed or undecided?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that in a second, don't worry, thank you. Anyone else? First call, second call, third call, opposed?
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, sir.
Pardon me, I'm a little old.
Not sorry, take your time, my friend.
Were you here, sir, were you here when I swore everybody in?
I beg your pardon?
Were you here when I swore everybody in?
No.
Did you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear the testimony you'll give in the matter at hand will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Reed, I live at number one six one Dorchester Street. Been there a while. These, uh, John and, uh, his lady are, uh, are good neighbors, good people, have an excellent reputation as builders. So, uh, uh, there is no qualm with the, uh, character of the people, the only worry is the conformity with the setback of the various houses, there are five along the street. And if we can keep it, uh, uh, similar, we're going to be fine, but if we go over the existing, uh, setback, that's where the problem is. Now, uh, I'm unsure as to how much the, uh, porch is going to be built up over this setback. If you have one floor and a canopy, uh, that's a porch, but if you put anything over that, that's a projection. So it's, uh, with trepidation that we look at this, we don't, uh, we aren't sure how this is going to turn out. And this is why. And this is why we have to bring attention. So this is the gist of uh, my neighbor Mark and, and the next door neighbor to the proposed property, Chris. And we're just trying to keep a, a sense of uniformity along the road.
Thank you.
I pause because you seem to have some
No, we were just looking at the, I think we're all just looking at the plans.
Okey dokey. You speak as to what you're talking about, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call, I think I already called first call, second call, third call closed. For that part of the hearing closed. Questions, comments, do you want to address any of those, Brian? Mr. Lehman?
Yeah. If I can show you a couple of pictures, first of all, I don't, you know, Mark's a good guy, I built his house. I understand what he's saying.
Sure.
Because of the shape of this lot, there's no way to do what he wants us to do to push it back, we cannot do it. So I brought pictures of his house, he has a nine foot.
Yeah, I'm up in the, I'm around the corner.
He's nine foot, yeah. This is his house.
I don't know what the setback is.
And then the house at one thirty-one Dorchester Street, I built that also, that is literally five feet off the street.
Kind of your block, this, this block.
This house I built is five feet.
Yeah, right, this, this is what they're talking about, this block is fairly unified, this is all over.
No, I, I, I understand, I agree. That one block is not in one block. Yeah, so I mean, I understand what they're saying, but what's fair is fair. I mean, other people have done it, I've done it for other people, so. And Oscar's, Oscar's house is a nine feet, he has nine feet in the front of the house.
You looked at, you looked at trying to do, I'm sure, trying to do everything and like, there's just no outside of removal, right?
Right, well, we want as much as a house.
Foundation in that house.
So I told them that when they, when they
So you're coming out six additional feet max, then adding the steps, right? So
Right, no.
From the portion of your covered area, so the actual main structure is twenty feet off the street still?
Yes.
Any questions, Mr. Hammond?
No, nineteen-nine, yeah.
No question.
Mr. Fragle?
Any questions?
Yeah. Ms. Barry?
I understand people are worried about the view, but if they did everything based on view, no one will be able to do anything.
Any questions?
Are you opposed to pushing it back three feet? You think about pushing it back three feet and if we gave you more of a setback?
I'd have to rip off the foundation, I think, because any of the existing houses could be, it's over on, take it out and put it one in. Plus, plus, because of lots, triangle, it's not really square.
Yeah.
It's just impossible to do right with that.
If I could address that, number one, the, the, the two-story deck in the front, it projects five feet, as does that gable for the second floor porch and office space. Those are totaling five feet, I mean, we could pull it back maybe two, to go to three feet out and maybe that would make people a little bit happier, I, I don't know. I'd hate to ruin, I like the feel of the architecture, I'm obviously biased. Um, I don't think it's impeding on anyone's view. Uh, everyone has a beautiful, straight-on vantage point of the Boston skyline, Marina Bay. And I just, I, I'm worried about the integrity of the design the way it is. And I, I really don't think the gentleman that was up here speaking, his, his porch projection is closer to the property line than this house will be. With all due respect, I appreciate his concern, but he's closer to the street than we are going to be.
Mr. O'Brien?
I, I just have a, I think that structurally, there's, there's different
properties.
I mean, they're, they're different setbacks along the whole entire road. Uniformity, what they want to do is put a building in there as opposed to a front porch or a overhang. And if you go the other side of the street there, you're up almost to the edge of the property line.
You're on the sidewalk, on the other side of the shore.
Yeah. I
I think, you know
I can understand the look for the consistency, but I don't think you accomplish anything by saving it, I don't know.
I think
No, you're, yeah, we're okay with it.
So hold on, we're, we're discussing as a board for right now. Um, I think that, look, I, you know, I think we probably maybe go down there, take another look. I mean, I know the neighborhood extraordinarily well, I've been there forty-three years. The, I, I, I understand consistency and conformity, neighborhoods just aren't like that anymore. Every house on that block is different. You got some pushed way back, you got some on the street, you got multifamilies there, you got, or two units. Uh, you got the adjacent houses that they, that they talked about were formerly small capes, they're no longer small capes, you know. I mean, there's, there's no conformity to the neighborhood at all. And trying to preserve a lot line, I get it, I mean, or, or building line and that, yeah, we have, the zoning board exists because there is not conformity in our lots in the city at all. We try to have some plans so that we can make arbitrary decisions based on buildings, neighborhoods. Uh, because we just, we're not, we're not a cookie cutter community, I mean, it's not like you're building down in Florida. Like, there, there is no tract homes up here, um, so, and tract lots. So I think that's, you know, I mean, I think if we, if you, I think the board would probably do, be served well to go down there, take a look at the street from both sides, you know, take a look at the difference in buildings. Uh, because I, I don't know where you could pull this back, I mean, yeah, you could tell them to get rid of the deck and then, you know, and pull it further back. But I don't know that that accomplishes much either way.
Right there, is it possible to put a stake out there so we can see where it ends up?
Well, the existing footprint, main house is exactly twenty-five feet. So that, so we're coming five feet.
You're coming forward six feet on the deck.
Mr. Coleman, just one second, I'll, yeah.
Could you just, could you give us a stake out there just so we can, we can get a peek at it? Sir.
I, I said he could come up, yeah, yeah.
Hi, I wanted to come up and say, you know, I built one thirty-one with John.
Yeah, yeah.
It's one of the most nicest houses out there.
I love it.
And no one's questioning that.
Yeah, yeah.
But when we built one thirty-one, it was on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
It was a pre-existing, we could have built it still on the sidewalk, we didn't, by the request of the city. They said, would you consider moving it back five feet? We moved it back five feet and there is conformity on Dorchester Street, there is
Not going down, no, it's
There is, there is conformity on Dorchester, I hate to just
Going which way?
Going either way.
No.
And, and the only building that is out of conformity is, uh, the guy's, uh, he's like three houses in from Bellevue because he had a pre-existing home that was out close to the sidewalk. You know what, I'm not against John's building.
No, 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 I mean, look, I mean, just look, look, just come here, just look at the map right there. Tell me there's conformity on that side of Dorchester Street.
Well, this is my house.
No, I'm talking this way, no.
Yeah, this way, well, this guy here
So this, you, you might be able to say, yeah, for your five homes up here, but there's no conformity here.
Well, there's conformity here, we, that's the whole point of being, we just want
No, no, I, I get it, I get it, but then, but conformity would be every one of these houses is a small cape still.
The guy that built the house down here, he was, he was already pre-existing, he was up
I'm not, I'm not, there's no argument, I mean, I think we'll, we'll come down and look at it again. But I mean, I think if we walk down here and measure all of you.
Hey, listen, I want a nice house of
It's a, it's a really pretty house, let's
I thi- I think that if there's, if, look, I, I think we, if, do, do, can we take a couple weeks, go down, look at the lot? Just let them get comfortable with what they're looking at, you know, take another peek at it again. Um, I think that probably would, would make sense at this point.
I ask for
Yeah, you can just kind of, yeah, just give, give, give an indication as to how much it would, you know, come out for them.
I mean, two things aren't going to change. The foundation area that he wants to maintain and keep, and the, and the odd size of the lot, I mean, it's
They're not going to change, yeah, yeah.
So
It's either you, we decide that you can do it or you, you gotta scrap the foundation and figure it out.
What day?
So I can't be here the twenty-second, can we go to the next one?
Coming up on election.
Two cases in old business on the twenty-second, we have none on November twelfth.
Can we do November twelfth?
We're coming for one case.
What's that?
They say one case on November twelfth?
No, there's no old business currently on November twelfth.
I'm sorry, I just, I just said there was
No, I'm out of town on the twenty-second, so considering I heard the case, it'd probably make it easier instead of having Marty come and listen to it.
Twelve is easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
All right.
Want to make a motion?
Take a motion?
Z B A dash twenty-four fifty-eight, Joe McLaughlin, John Lehman, Bavarians, special permit. Flood to increase the current single-family home by one and one-half stories, add renovate front and back porches, add rear addition, make structure flood compliant and premises numbered number forty-five. Dorchester Street Quincy, make a motion to extend to November twelfth.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. So we'll, we're going to go down, we'll make a decision after we, we see that. That works for you. And if you could just, you know, sometime, just, even if it's just a little chalk outline there, just so we can see, I appreciate that. What? I know, well, that'll be my retirement day.
A lot of head shaking there, Brian.
Case Z B A twenty-four dash fifty-nine, J C B T Architect LLC for Bavarians finding a special permit flood to demolish the existing garage to construct a three-story rear addition with the garage on the premise number one thirty Willow Street. Is the applicant or the representative here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Counselors, yeah, yeah. People don't know what streets they represent.
I didn't say that out loud.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name's Jim Chan, the architect of J C B T Architect. I'm here tonight representing the homeowner of one thirty Willow Street. Uh, for the record, our office is located thirty-eight Villains Road in Quincy. Um, one thirty Willow Street is in a residential B district. Um, the site is fifty by one oh five, fifty feet by one oh five deep. And it's, it's approximately five thousand two hundred fifty square feet of lot size. Um, we're proposing to request for a rear addition to the existing non-conforming structure and non-conforming lot. We're proposing a three new, uh, three-story wood frame construction at the rear, uh, with a ground level parking, uh, two additional living floor above that, uh, totaling a gross square footage of, uh, of three thousand two hundred ninety. So the total proposed footprint, uh, is approximately one thousand six hundred ninety square feet, uh, after the addition. Um, the total living area, like I said, is thirty-two hundred. Um, the existing basement will be infill, um, due to the fact that it's located in the floodplain district. So we'll need to raise the, the basement level above the floodplain elevation. So any living space proposed will be at least one, one foot above the floodplain elevation. So the rear addition at the ground level will be an enclosed two, two level, two, two space of parking. The original garage there will be demolished, um, and creating two car garage. So, and then the first floor will be, um, will have a newly relocated kitchen, an open office and full bathroom. The second floor addition will have a new master bedroom plus a new, um, secondary bedroom. Total, total length of two, four bedrooms, um, and three full bathrooms. So the applicant is seeking for a, a finding on horizontal extension on the existing non-conforming structure. To, to the right side, currently we have six feet setback, so the new addition will be pushed back one foot. So the rear addition will have a seven feet setback, so it's less than the existing. So all the proposed footprint does not protrude, do not protrude beyond the existing non-conforming setback. So in addition, we're requesting for a, uh, variance on excessive F A R. And this zone is limited to forty percent, uh, it would be for the multifamily. But, um, our use will stay the same as a single family, uh, in which, uh, if it was in a residential A district, will, will, there will be no limit on the F A R. So the proposed project, uh, is, will be considered a, a three, three-story at the back. Uh, the front is still a two and a half story, um, that, that portion is to remain. And the front setback is, is going to stay where it is, existing non-conformance. Um, so the rear of the property actually slopes down a bit, um, which will create an indoor garage, uh, at the lower level. So this lot will, it, it, like I said, it's in the floodplain district, so it will require a special permit approval from the Conservation Commission. Um, we also propose to have one exterior parking, um, on the outside. So the proposal will have three total parking space where only two is required. So in the end, I do believe that this proposal is consistent with the, uh, with the, you know, surrounding multifamily neighborhood zones, uh, will not cause any more detrimental to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Is the re, is the basement being done because of the, because of the requirement of over forty percent, is that what?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent, so you gotta fill the basement. Any questions at this time?
No questions at this time.
Could you show, tell me where the third parking place is?
Yes.
Is either two in garage or?
Yep, two in garage, so right here, or, 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 you know, the third parking space.
And the turn radius of work on those?
This turn radius into the garage will work, uh, setback here is, uh, nineteen feet, whatever.
Okay, so the, the second car in the garage will be able to turn out with a car parked in the back?
Yeah, when it's parked here, it will be able to turn out.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm good.
Any other questions at this time? Did I have a
Yeah.
Thank you. All of us in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. Any comments from the engineering department? We've reviewed this middle for the above-referenced projects and our comments are as follows. Best way, how much impervious area will be increased due to the development? Provide plan showing the layout of utility and grading. Whether available any fill or change of grade due to the development, compensatory storage may be required to fill as proposed as part of, on the property. Upon completion of the project, as-built plan showing all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file. Now, they should search to be submitted if the property is in the flood zone. Opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call?
Go on, her.
Second call?
Close.
Yep.
My name is Jim Edwards and I reside at one thirty Phillips Street, one street over from Willow. I've lived there for over fifty years now. Uh, this is, this building is in a flood zone, so has the, I'm not sure on special permit issues, what comes first, kind of the chicken or the egg kind of a thing. But has this proposal been submitted to CONCON, have they reviewed it? What's that?
Oh, yeah, that's on next step.
Next step, so any approvals or disapprovals, what it would be contingent upon?
Correct.
Because fifty percent, if the build, cost of the building upgrades is in, in excess of fifty percent of the value of the building, one hundred percent of the building has to be above the one hundred year floodplain elevation.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, Mr. Con.
Okay, so that's one thing. Um, and I do see under three point four point five non-conforming single and two-family residential structures that horizontal extensions are, they may be authorized. But my feeling about this building is that you're six or seven feet from your neighboring, from your neighbor next door. And you're doubling the length of this building along the lot line and you're just going to And you're doubling the length of this building along the lot line, and you're just gonna overpower both the residents on either side. I think it's, um.
You're referring to extending the prior existing non-conformance along that line?
That's right, but that's, yeah, right, but now we're doubling the, the length of the building. And the existing building had some, the existing house, we're filling it in the front too, and the buil, the building that's there, the house that's there has some nice architectural features, not great, but it's a neighborhood building. We heard a lot of talk about that a few minutes ago, about the character of the neighborhoods and how it gets nibbled away at and, and it, it degenerates over years for lack of a better word, but anyway. Between the fact that the building will be, by filling in the front and extending out the back, and all the architectural features on that existing house are now gone. We've created a seventy-something foot by twenty-four foot boxcar, that's what it is. And the architectural features are nonexistent, the front of the building, which has some character right now, is, it's gone. And the, the front of the building really, to me, is kind of an insult to the, I mean, yeah, sometimes as architects, we have to do what we have to do, but it's kind of an insult to the streetscape. And I think considering the scale of the addition, the architectural. I don't wanna say that word, but, um, I think that this project has some problems, and it's a, kind of a bad addition to the neighborhood, and I hope the zoning would refuse us to approve it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call, third call closed. It's, it's remaining a single family for now, is that correct? So you're not adding any exterior egress or anything like that for the second story, so it's?
No, there, there will be a, uh, rear egress on the first floor.
Family expanding, is that kind of the reasoning for?
That is correct, and the family is here tonight.
Okay. Any questions, it's a massive house.
So we've got a fifty-two hundred square foot lot with a proposed thirty-two hundred square foot building, is that correct?
The original lot size is, yeah, five thousand two hundred fifty, and.
And the proposed total square footage with the addition will be?
Thirty-two fifty.
Okay.
So the green spaces, the twenty-six by? The back, that back, right there.
Yeah.
What's the dimension of that place?
From, from the rear, I was to the right, it's twenty-five feet and fifty.
Twenty-five and fifty.
Can I see one more thing, please?
Yes, sure.
Sure.
Uh, I just, um, if I, I see the mathematics of the F A R, and, uh, I checked it myself, and I don't know whether, uh, the architect was talking about usable square feet, but gross square feet, I believe, is how.
It's supposed to be our gross, right.
So my calculations, uh, we have closer to seven point eight as an F A R, point seven, point eight as opposed to six or whatever the, the application says. And the F A R required in that column is point four, so we're almost doubling the F A R of that, of that building in this proposal, so that, that's it.
What's the square footage of the property?
Fifty-two.
What's the square footage of the house?
In the zoning code, the, uh, garage does not count to what?
Oh, so the current, but no, so you wouldn't count the? It counts for, yeah, I thought it, cause it's, even if it's underneath the structure, it would still count too, well, yeah.
Taking a fifty-two fifty lot and thirty-two fifty house.
But that's, and that thirty-two fifty is without the garage?
Correct.
Correct, so it's even, yeah, another six hundred square feet. It's just a massive, massive property, not a small lot, go ahead. Any required comments?
I'm done.
Yeah, no, way, way too big, I think that third parking place, face is.
Non-existent?
It's non-feasible.
Non-feasible, thank you, yeah, I don't know how you get the, if you're driving a Vespa, I don't know how you're gonna maneuver it around there, and then you're parking, end up parking on the grass, taking up more of that, the small amount of green. Needs to get much smaller and a little more character than a rectangle.
Looking at your plan, you have a large entertainment space on the top floor, and the first floor is, again, rather large, so I think this could be shrunk down without there being, we're not actually give up any bedrooms. I don't think it's a hardship, you can still have a note that would probably be a bit smaller and satisfy more of the neighbors and the court members.
And you're losing the basement too, you know, at the same time, so I mean, I think that's probably why they put the entertainment space up top, I just don't know how you, I, like, I'm with you, I don't know how you'd ever get a third car. I mean, I don't even know how you're gonna get two in the garage, like, I, I mean, most of the time, people are just like, you're gonna put one car in the garage unless there's a storm, and then you're gonna put two in, and you contribute to the problems that we have in Quincy every day.
Correct, and the third car is gonna be blocking in the car.
Yeah. Mr. O'Brien?
I agree with everybody's comment, I'm real easy to get along with, yeah, that's why I raised a question about the guy to begin with. And there are some big houses on the street, but they're further down, a couple of big ones. But this, the lots are bigger, so.
Yeah, it's a narrow size.
This is a small lot for a very secure.
Would you like a second?
Yeah, just, just give me one second. Yeah, I, I mean, but I don't even know, like, what you're gonna pare it down, I'm sure you probably looked at other iterations, right, is that, did you try to make it smaller?
I, I think we can make it smaller, this is really up to the, uh, the homeowner.
Did you wanna speak, did you, did you get sworn in? Okay.
Yeah, so that's my parent over there, I'm actually the daughter, like, they own a house.
Okay.
I'm actually the daughter who.
Can I just have your name, please?
Uh, Jane Lu, who live in, uh, one thirty Willow Street.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so they're my parents, they own the house.
Okay.
So, uh, right now, they, my little brother and, uh, me and my boyfriend both live in, uh, like, this house.
Okay.
And then in the future, like, we're gonna still live in this house with, like, a whole family.
Sure.
And then my, like, my boyfriend, my, like, in the future, maybe have, like, childrens, and then right now, my, like, uh, younger brother is getting bigger, so like, we're thinking about, like, we may need more rooms and then more space.
Yep.
And then, and I go, uh, like, uh, just talk about the garage, right now, we have, like, four car in our house already, and then my parent, my father's car need to park in, like, the street parking right now.
So you do four cars in the driveway?
We have four car already right now, so like.
And they're on, and they're driveway now?
Yeah, three car in the driveway, and then one car is like, uh, like a street parking right now. So, um, I know that it's like a huge house for you guys, but like, for us, we may need that room for the future. That's what we, like, uh, thinking about right now to have this kind of house, yeah. So it's like a four room in a second floor, and then we, right now, it's like, uh, already need to use three room already. So maybe in the future, we have a baby, or like, uh, with a fam, like, with a friend.
Maybe in the future, your parents throw you out, you know?
I know, like, sometime the Chinese country, and then.
No, no, I know, I'm just kidding.
Cause I, I, cause my, uh, boyfriend's parent, they are back in China.
Yep.
So like, uh.
They might visit and stuff, yeah, I know.
Yeah, they visiting, and then may, like, uh, what we planning right now, maybe like, in the next ten year, we will still live in this house, and then right now, it's like a way, way smaller. Like, I have a lot of things, like, I have no place to put in right now, and I, I, I like, I'm, like, I, I, I don't, I don't wanna buy any more things, cause I have no space to put them in, you know? Cause as a, like, a Chinese, uh, family, we usually need a lot of space for storage, that's why we need that, that house. Yeah, and then my mom like to invite her friend to come in to, like, drink tea, have a chatting in her house, that's why we have, like, a big living room, and then a kitchen, and then stuff like that.
Okay.
I think that is, like, makes sense to us, that's why we're thinking about, yeah, has a, like, uh.
It's just a very big house for a very small lot.
Yeah, I know that.
So that's what we look at, you know, we try to keep.
Keep it a little smaller?
Yeah, I, I think we can try and figure out how to pare it down a little bit.
Uh-huh, but like, that's the reason why we think we need that house, but I just, like, tell you guys about that, yeah, thank you so much.
Sure, no, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I just think, I just think it's just a massive tradition on a very small lot in a tight neighborhood already with no parking.
With a lot of parking, a lot of parking needed.
Yeah.
We'll go back to.
If you can just, yeah, if you can figure out, I mean, I don't know, I, I don't know where you're gonna end up, where you're gonna have to go drop to figure out where to go from there, but.
Can we continue this, uh?
Yeah, sure. Twenty second, I mean, what, what's, what was that, the twelve?
Um.
Can we do the twelve, is that too much on the dot here?
Could you possibly adjust the garage so?
Jim, Jim? Set it back.
One forty-five, you want to go on the twelve, you wanna put one if there's a twelve.
Set it back and then second floor behind him.
Exactly, the garage come closer, you know, no one else is going. Twenty, twenty-four space, that's not blocking the garage.
Twelve, all right?
I did make a mistake.
Okay.
Wanna propose that?
Eleven twelve.
Yeah.
Z B A twenty-four dash fifty-nine, J C B T Architect LLC variance finding and special permit F P O D to demolish existing garage, constructs a three-story rear addition to garage on premise number one three zero Willow Street. Make a motion to extend to eleven twenty-two, twenty-four.
No, twelve, eleven twelve.
Eleven twelve?
Yeah.
Eleven twelve.
And if you can just, you know, try and get the plans to us.
One week ahead.
Yeah, at least one week ahead, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last but not least, uh, Z B A twenty-four sixty-five, Stephen Niocci for a variance or finding to rehabilitate and expand the existing structure resulting in fourteen new dwelling units on the premise, premise number twenty-nine dash thirty-one Newcombe Street in Quincy. The applicant or the representative here? Oh, we got fancy now, huh? You guys come technologically enhanced here, too?
We do our best.
Guess it's this big old thing. No. Man, you come prepared, don't you, all right?
We said two hours before.
Thank you.
No, I know, it's nice.
Get up in dark, all this dark.
Okay.
Floor is yours, my friend.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, my name is Gordon Glass, Attorney with Johnson and Bornstein, Land Use Law Firm located at twelve Chestnut Street in Endover. Uh, a little unusual, but I just wanted to kick off this evening by giving Kathleen her flowers, uh, she was extremely helpful throughout the application process, impatient, and I hope you guys know how great she is, I really, really appreciate her help. With me tonight is, uh, Carlos Sculte, our project engineer, and Tim Johnson, our project architect. Uh, we're here representing twenty-one thirty, twenty-nine to thirty-one Newcombe Street LLC. On that, in my original cover letter for the application, I listed the applicant as Stephen Niocci, that's the property owner, uh, the correct applicant is twenty-nine thirty-one Newcombe Street LLC, which I, uh, corrected on an amended letter, I filed a few more last week. Perfect, so it's a preliminary matter, uh, wanted to point out that this is our property highlighted in green, a portion of the property is located within the twenty-seventeen FEMA flood maps. Uh, we've noted section eight point one of the zoning ordinance, um, and just wanted to point that out, very small amount of work on the project will be done in that area. All right, so why are we here tonight? We're asking for two alternative forms of relief, either a finding from this board or two variances. So the finding would be under section three point four point three of the ordinance. Other than lodging houses and dorms, uh, the only other type of residential structure allowed in the business center district is multifamily housing. What we have on the lot is a two-family home, uh, so it seems that the most comparable type of use that's allowed, because a two-family home's not even allowable by special permit, the most comparable use is multifamily housing. So what we're looking at here is a deficiency of lot area and deficiency of frontage, now, as I've highlighted up there, we've got thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine square feet of lot area, where forty-two thousand is required for multifamily use. And we've got a frontage of ninety-nine feet, where one hundred feet is required for multifamily use and lot width. We think using the, their variable lot area and frontage standards in the B C district, but we think applying these standards as the standards that apply to the lot, considering the existing structure is a two-family home and the closest use under the bylaw is a multifamily home, and two-family homes aren't regulated in the B C district in the first place. We think applying these standards makes sense, this is why we think we qualify for a finding for the expansion of pre-existing non-conforming structure, because we're not creating any new non-conformities, there's no subdivision proposed, lot area's not changing, the frontage isn't changing. So that's why we think we qualify for a finding. Think we also qualify for, you know, if the board disagrees, for variances for lot area and for frontage dash lot width, based on the exceptional, uh, exceptional narrowness and shallowness of the lot. Uh, but really, the, the two things that findings and variances, the thing that they have in common, is that for the board to issue either, there has to be a finding that there's no substantial detriment to the neighborhood compared to the current structure. Um, and then you add in with variances, no substantial derogation from the intended purpose of the zoning ordinance, so that's really the element that I wanna dig in on here. So, uh, as the board is likely aware, uh, Quincy has been designated by the Commonwealth as a gateway municipality. Uh, in fact, out of over three hundred and fifty communities in the Commonwealth, only twenty-six qualify as gateway municipalities. And all that really means is it's a mid-sized city where educational attainment's a little bit below average, and so is the average household income. There's a parallel kind of structure under the federal government, which are federal opportunity zones, and it's worth noting that the federal government has also identified two large federal opportunity zones in Quincy. So that's kind of the economic condition of the area, uh, you know, and with that backdrop, we can bring ourselves to the property. Uh, this is a current picture of the, uh, the structure on the property, it's a somewhat deteriorated two-family home built in the eighteen sixties. Uh, the purpose of the project is to rehabilitate that structure and add fourteen new dwelling units for a sixteen-unit, uh, multifamily housing structure on the property. So as mentioned before, we're looking at an approximately third of an acre large parcel, uh, surrounding uses are largely commercial and multifamily. Uh, we're here to save the front of the structure and to add to the rear, and a very important, uh, piece of information on the site is that it is, uh, approximately a quarter of a mile away from the, uh, Quincy Center M B T A station. So, uh, under the zoning ordinance, there is a clear purpose to try to incentivize and promote housing in close proximity to public transit. Um, and this certainly is in close proximity to public transit, and as we go through this, I'll explain, uh, how the project has kind of been tailored with that in mind. So here's a look at a piece of the site plan, uh, I'll step over here for just a moment. In white, you'll see the existing dwelling, the addition is grayed out there at the back of the lot, and then we're also having parking and driveways on both sides. Uh, so we've vered been before planning, uh, have some good wind in our sails, pleased to say that last month they gave us a site plan approval, and they also granted a special permit. So our original application to this board requested some parking relief, that's no longer necessary because the planning board gave us relief and approved this parking design under section five point one point seventeen of the zoning ordinance. Uh, that's sixteen spaces, that's one space per unit, and that parking design is intended, along with certain programs that, uh, applicant is going to run at the property, and the provision of covered bicycle prop, uh, parking on the property, intended to incentivize a certain type of individual, uh, to take up residence at these units, someone who's gonna take advantage of public transit, namely. Architectural materials, we do have the architect here who, uh, if the board has questions, can go into more detail in those kinds of things, uh, but the main point is that the materials have been selected to conform with the surrounding site and with the, uh, historic architecture. It's just a kind of a rendering of what the new building will look like, you'll see that the somewhat square addition to the rear of the building, that's the addition that's being proposed, uh, whereas you can kind of see the delineation to the existing two-family structure there. So that's what we're proposing, we're also proposing some, uh, good local flora surrounding the site to beautify the site and to help, uh, shield the use from abutters. So talking about the type of people we're trying to incentivize to come to these units, uh, these are the type of people that live in Quincy and work in Quincy, they're members of Quincy's workforce. These are relatively small units, studio units, apartment-style living. These are relatively small units, studio units, apartment-style living, separate bathrooms. But we're looking for people, I mean, the same type of people who are going to take advan- advantage of public transit, that we already know live in this gateway community. So we're looking to provide them modern, nice housing that incentivizes their use of the resources available to them in the municipality. So before I get into the shadow study, I'll just say, those are the elements that we think kind of prove out that this isn't going to be substantially more detrimental than the existing use on the property. In fact, it's gonna supply fourteen critically needed new housing units for Quincy's workforce. And it's notable that the planning board in issuing its approvals last month seemed to agree with that assessment. So the other question, if we think about variances and not a finding, is, well, actually, I think I actually have to do a shadow study as well, so the subst- not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. You could see that the shadow study has been done for the equinoxes and for the solstices, and there is an extremely minimal amount of shadow spilling off of the property, and that's only being shown during winter time. We also have a photometric plan that shows the emphasis on downward-facing light and light fixtures. They're not projecting any artificial light off the property. So we don't, we believe this, we believe this will be a boon to the neighborhood and to the municipality. And that, that one remaining question, the variance context, is, will it substantially derogate from the purpose or intent of the zoning bylaw? What we're proposing here is to take a non-conforming use and turn it into a conforming use, and we're proposing transit-oriented development, quarter of a mile away from a transit station. So we think this is exactly what the bylaw envisions in this district, and we think it'll be good for the neighborhood and for the city. So with that, I think I'll give it a break for a minute, see if any of you have any questions for us, and myself and the project team will do our best to answer them. Thanks very much.
What was the total height on the rear building?
The total, total height?
Yeah.
Thirty feet above grade, I think?
Three stories, thirty feet.
Okay. That's already kind of sitting up on that lot anyways, right? It's already pretty high. Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
No, I don't right now.
No questions.
I have a related question from Rod. Was that the, are there repair plates beside that? So was that supposed to have been redeveloped? I seem to remember us being in there.
I think there were two or three different proposals for this particular piece. It was larger and then smaller again. It was a really large project at one point, it didn't go over well with the neighbors, they tried to go down to them.
But it, it's not, you guys weren't that proposer for that way, for including.
Different team.
That was a different team.
Okay.
Same owner, but different team.
Okay. So at one time, it was all in one, now it's back to.
Pretty sure it was two parcels.
Yeah.
It was a much bigger building, and with the flood plan issues with the underground parking, there were a lot of issues with it.
Right, yeah.
Easily be done, so they could.
Plus, I mean, the neighbors up there were stren- strenuously objected to anything going in there. That was, that was a big fight.
It was a big project at that time.
It was a big fight, too.
Yeah, it was massive at that point.
Yeah, okay, alright, um, thank you.
Want to, you have anything else to add, or did you get?
No, they're done with the questions.
No, I mean, there's some things, I happen to be at the planning board the night you were there, and not for yours, but Board Member Sean Assim is talking as in, and I saw it coming up, I never really kind of got the end. How the heck are you gonna keep all of your building employees off of all public parking, which is right there? I mean, the natural answer is make a deal with the Y somehow, and I don't know what they do or do, you can't put construction equipment there, but for your workers. Otherwise, that Cottington, everything is just gonna be jammed up with workers. Right now, there's no meters on it. I don't think there's a limit on how long you can park there either, so. Concern for the people in the area, and is it directly related to the zoning questions tangentially, but that was sort of, I never heard an answer to the question. It was something I've heard since then, people talking about it, so I figured I would ask the question again. I think you guys.
So you guys.
I can maybe speak to that.
Okay.
So, from the record, Carlos is with Civil Engineering Consultants, or Civil Engineers on the project, who are involved in the planning board process as well. One of the things we talked about there is part of the construction management plan that gets submitted when you submit the building permit application. It was discussed that there would be elements incorporated into that construction management plan that identified that construction workers, you know, two or three spaces on the site that weren't reserved for staging, could be used for the people coming that day, and there would be very specific guidance to coming in, dropping off your materials in the morning, and then you have to leave. There's no on-street parking on Newcombe, so you can't park there, so they would have to find parking in publicly available spaces and essentially walk back to the site after they dropped their, their materials.
I heard that. I found it to be wholly unrealistic, because who the heck is gonna be managing and.
Go talk to Stop and Shop.
Stop and.
Let's talk to the Y or Stop and Shop.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they might be able to lease parking. It's just some agree, and we, we understand, and the owner understands, that there's no parking available on Newcombe, and the public parking on adjacent streets are gonna fill up, right? So it's not gonna be available, and the contractors are gonna know that ahead of time, so they're not just gonna be circling the block looking for parking. There, that's going to be incorporated in the construction management plan. Yeah, you know, can't say that I, you know, I don't, circling when I'm looking for a space is just what happens, but if you're coming there every day, you're, you're gonna kind of find what works for you in that sense, and it's gonna be.
My office is around the corner. I can tell you the city does a pretty decent job ticketing down there, 'cause I've gotten my head, my fair share. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, no questions.
Uh, no, I'm good, thanks.
Any more to present, or any, did we, architect, or do we wanna hear any architectural design?
Make a rest.
Okay. Um, you can have a seat.
Okay.
If anyone wants to speak in favor, first call, second call, third call closed. Do we got a good list, or?
A list and a supporting letter from, um.
The council.
The council.
I'll read that in first. Supporting letter from Council McCarthy. I support the planned fourteen units on Newcombe Street, as the footprint over the last four years has decreased dramatically. There still are the following concerns, is Newcombe's a narrow street and always has, is going to have a water issue with its proximity to the town Brook on McGrath. DPW, one, DPW's required to look at Newcombe again to see if any improvements can be made to water flow in the area. Two, all parking period for the units is contained at times in the parking lot, no street or sidewalk parking. Three, any abutters that have asked for fencing or other adjustments to the abutting property be reasonably considered by Mr. Niocci. Thanks to all involved in this project of the area, as the area is an area of future change and growth. And then, uh, just from the civil engineer, we've reviewed and provided comments for this project to the planning board. All comments we provided have been addressed properly. We don't need any other further comments from the ZBA at this time. Opposed or undecided, first call, second call?
My name is Kevin Christian. I live at twenty Granville Street. I'm a direct abutter to this proposed project. I'm just kind of undecided. I'm really just concerned about the density of the project. I mean, as I said, it's, um, I'm a direct abutter. It's gonna be over thirty feet tall and, and next to my property. There is a lot of development in the area, projects going on. They're all at the end of the block. I mean, this proposal is right in the middle of, um, of, 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 of the city block, and as I said, I'm just concerned about the density.
What was your address again?
Twenty Granville, P-R-A-N-V-I-L-L-E.
Is that a single-family home?
It's a two-family home.
Okay.
And you're directly behind it, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call, third call, call that part of the hearing closed. I mean.
Could I have a chance to respond to the abutters concern?
Yeah, sure.
Just wanted to point out that the, you know, while there is this kind of dual lot area system where there's base lot area for multifamily housing that we don't comply with, the other lot area requirement is five hundred square feet per dwelling unit, and that's kind of speaks to the density that the municipality thinks is reasonable within the zoning district. And under that system, we could have up to twenty-seven dwelling units, where we're proposing sixteen. So we have, and as noted before, this used to be a much larger project, so we have done a lot of work to, to provide critically needed housing units, but to not to put up some overblown monster of a project on the street.
Obviously, trying to, you were trying to keep some scope at the front, right? Is that why you kept the, are you keeping the older dwelling out front, or is, as part of the project, or was there a, was that part of the reasoning is to scope of the neighborhood or existing structure?
I think best for an architect.
Yes, the, the existing house built around eighteen sixty, I believe.
In eighteen sixties.
Eighteen sixty, so a federal, uh, so we wanted to bring that back to its original federal style, and then the addition in the rear, um, using a mansard roof as the expression in the gable in the front, so we felt that was a, a good fit between the two roof expressions, but yes, um, keeping the addition to the rear, we've been, we've talked to the abutter in the rear. Uh, that's why we generated the shadow studies, so even though it is in the rear, the sha- predominant shadows will be off our abut- the direct abutters property, and we're also providing a six-foot high stockade fence between the rear of the property and the abutting property.
And the trees run alongside that fence, right?
We do, yep.
I remember seeing, I just.
So there's fence and supplemented with additional trees.
I'm just remembering.
Additional trees at the rear?
Yeah, in front of the, the stockade, I believe.
There you go.
Yeah, so I believe the abutters, uh, page north, uh, behind the property, right? So there's an existing stockade fence there, uh, and then we supplemented with additional evergreen trees there to provide, you know, additional height and buffering above that fence.
Is that you?
Yes, it is.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, the stockade fence is, is in very poor shape. It's probably thirty years old. Definitely needs to be replaced.
Okay.
Will you be replacing the fence?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, we're replacing this, right, and screening on all sides.
The one you're speaking of, the old fence is coming down, and you're putting up an.
In the rear, that's correct.
In the rear, or the sides are all, well.
What is it, the, they're in the rear, but how far on the sides, Carlos?
Uh, so on the left-hand side of the page, there's a fence. It's in pretty good shape on that side, uh, so we're keeping that fence. It's an all-new fence down the right side, uh, and then across the back as well. Originally, we weren't proposing, but I understand, uh, speaking with the owner, he's amenable to replacing that stockade fence that isn't in great shape. So it would be an all-new fence along the back edge as well.
It's gonna be the same material as what's on the side.
What's on, yeah, what do you, what, did you discuss what you're replacing, what type of fence?
Uh, I believe down the right-hand side, we have essentially like a, a visibility fence. Traditionally, it's a white vinyl type fence, uh, and then along the back, uh, that's what we would propose. We're happy to work with them on what their material is, whether it's, you know, a picket-type wooden fence or a.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Did you hear that?
You're good?
I mean, the, yeah, I mean, the other alternative, the only other alternative, is you sit on that building in the front, and then you have this massive structure sitting in the front, you know, I mean, I think they've, they've worked out to try and figure out something, 'cause this has been years in the making, and you think about the neighborhood, and eventually, it's gonna be all this.
It is a lot smaller than what we thought previously with the two-story underground garage.
It was four stories with the two stories underground, yeah, it was massive.
I like the fact that they're keeping the older building, re- bringing that to some type of modern form of the older building, and, you know, there's a left, there's, there were at least one charging station. I think there was some discussion that there might be more, it's, you know, that it cover, it checks a lot of the boxes for what they're looking for, for.
We're gonna start going to planning, they're, they're giving us a lot more.
I, I, I got to tell someone, learned it, learned it. I'm actually surprised. I thought I was gonna get the same, I budgeted like four hours, 'cause I figured it's gonna get all the same people, but it kind of worked itself out to planning and it come that way. So, yeah, it was interesting, certainly getting a great start.
Any other comments?
You know, um, Quirk just closed their Hyundai dealership right down the road. They moved it to Braintree, that's a big open space. They, they want to talk to Dan Quirk about putting some of your workers down there. Get them off the street.
Sure, he'll be developing that soon.
The other thing is, there's a construction project now on the McGrath.
Spear, yeah, whatever it is, yeah.
I don't know where they're packing, but.
There's gonna be one going on behind the Y.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
He'll take the T.
What, do we, do we vote on both these, uh, as a kind of some discrepancy, or do we choose, or you choose, like, or is it on finding and?
It's a finding, right, very, yeah.
But you had some disagreements with that. You felt like it could be done either with a finding, or just do it all as one?
That would be my opinion. I mean, I, I felt like I was eligible for both forms of relief, so I'd give the board its options.
Sure. And with the options, does it matter if we choose one or the other, or?
It's all very complex loss.
Cause of all loss size, okay. You guys get the vote?
Yep.
Yep. ZBA twenty-four sixty-five, Stephen Niocci for a variance, finding to rehabilitate and expand the existing structure resulting in fourteen new dwelling units on the premise number twenty-nine thirty-one. Newcombe Street, Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance subject to fencing in the back.
Wouldn't think, change the name.
Oh, sorry, yeah, 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 yeah. What's that full, complete name? Sorry.
Twenty-nine thirty-one.
Twenty-nine thirty-one, Newcombe Street LLC for a variance, finding to rehabilitate and expand the existing structure resulting in fourteen new dwelling units on the premise number twenty-nine dash thirty-one, Newcombe Street, Quincy. I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Aye. Opposed? So move.
Look, it's. Alright, thanks very much for your time.
Motion to adjourn?
Before you all leave.
Signatures.
Signatures.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Opposed in favor?
And I don't have to chase anybody. And I don't have to chase anybody.